Kansas, States and beyond. So that's what that 36A means. The $743,000 FEMA Hurricane Harvey funds is what has been designated based on, give or take a little bit. The project manager who we're working with is, he says the money might fluctuate a little bit, but we still should come in that ballpark. And we're just going through, working myself and Judge with the project manager to try to help get as much of those funds as we can, which is purview share of what was designated for Waller County. The Checkers Restaurant and Gas Station got an email Friday. They're in very final stages and we went from initial, year and a half, well, just about a little over a year. Text out saying, no, you can't do it because that's strictly an interest ramp to the 290, right at the, just on the corner, right where the Dollar General is. Those two houses have been under potential escrow pending text out approval. So Checkers Restaurant and the gas station is what the buyer is proposing to put there. Text out is dotting their i's, crossing their t's, but it's in Austin now and very close to final approval. So again, just keeping you up on what's going on in our city. I mentioned working with Assistant Fire Chief Bordeaux to see what he could do to continue to help us so we can use him on a local level. Next, moving to item eight. Discuss, consider and take action to adopt a resolution designated in the city's official newspapers, Waller Times, due to closing of Waller County citizen.
Excuse me, correct?
Yes. Oh, we got these two agendas, excuse me.
I'm sorry.
Okay, that's okay, we'll stay with that unless we just need to.
The resolution.
Oh, okay, let's do that.
And it's pretty straightforward. We, at this point, with the Waller News Citizen, I don't know if the audience has heard, but they are closing. They made an announcement in their paper, so their last issue will be the 26th of July. So that's rather quick. We have been using Waller Citizen for years to post our notifications, so we took a look at that and the next-
We had no choice. City has to have a designated newspaper and that's the only other game in town.
So really, really truly, we don't have a choice.
Okay. What's Council's pleasure?
Mr. Mayor.
Councilman Randall.
How moved would we approve the resolution designated the city's official newspapers, the Waller Times, due to closing of Waller County citizen?
Seconded. It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve the resolution designated the city's official newspapers, the Waller Times, due to closing of Waller County. Says we heard the motion, ready for questions.
Because, does the new newspaper meet the qualifications? Because there's a difference between one had to be published weekly or like it couldn't be, it had to be more than a monthly paper, does that meet our requirements?
Yes, this paper comes out weekly. We, yes.
Nice to be a newspaper of generous circulation in the area, needs that qualification, you're fine.
And you prepare this?
I wrote this, yes. The resolution?
Yes.
Yes.
Any other readiness? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Discuss, consider and, out of 10, am I right now? Uh, yes. Okay. Discuss, consider, I've got two agendas, that's the only reason I asked that. Discuss, consider and take action to adopt an ordinance regarding substandard structures. Ms. Walker, would you please?
Thank you.
You have a great recent example of why this is and needs to be here. Ms. Reed, would you mind coming up with her, if you would? Because I think both of y'all are on that same situation with different pieces of information as to what's going on out there with some of our people.
I felt compelled to come this afternoon and address this issue. As you know, Ms. Carter, Ms. Reed and I are volunteers with, what is it, Mills on Wheels volunteers. And frequently, we are asked to assist some of our citizens with getting onto the wheel program. Last Wednesday, my neighbor brought a name to me and so it was not a telephone number with the person's name. So I drove around, he gave me an address and I drove around and the address he gave me was the wrong house. So the next morning, I got Officer Garrett to go with me. We located the man and the building that he was living in. What do you know? When did you know it and what did you do about it? What I knew was that this man was living in deplorable condition. And sometimes when you're senior, you are, he was in a crisis state. He had been released from a hospital, no family, and he located this shed to live in. On the outside, there were extension cards and water hoses and that let me know one thing. And when we opened the door, Officer Garrett was with me, the mold was so heavy, it hit us in the face. I'm not pretending this, it was awful. So I'm saying that there was nothing I could do but give him food. We don't have any place transitioned that we could have moved him from this site to another place to live. Now, we know we have this low income area, but it takes like two or three weeks to get that done. We are in a college town and our interest right now is on the college students. Guys, this is the third person that I have come in contact, living in substantial housing that's being rented out and my grandkids call it some kind of lord, I don't know what, what is it?
Slumlord.
Slumlords. This man told me he was paying $475 to live here. Now, this house was inhabited by some other people, but the guy that lived there prior to him coming has deceased. What we need to do is look at, we need to have eyes and ears because if he had not requested Mills on Wheels, we wouldn't have known he was there. I talked with the ladies in City Hall the other day and they said a gentleman had come over, had his toe amputated and he had slalomed out and he had left. We don't know where he went. So it's gonna be up to the citizen of this community to make a difference. We have to have in place standards to say that you cannot rent out these kinds of buildings to these people. There are places, but like I said, they don't know how to access these kinds of services. I did call Adult Protective Services and they said they would get involved in it, but I think today, he was taken to the hospital. So what did I know? When did I do it and what am I gonna do about it? I've talked with some people and we are going to come up with a task force. I have about four ladies who said they would work with me on this. We need to look at the senior citizens, the special need people, the handicapped. These people have moved into our community. The ones of us that are in here tonight, we have been here, we were blessed with purview by getting an education. So so often, we don't think of purview as having, I hate to use the word, a slum area, but it's here guys, whether we want to admit it or not. So Mayor, again, what did we know? When did we know it and what are we gonna do about it?
I really don't know what you want me to say other than I knew about this gentleman and I told Ms. Walker about him. I didn't know how he was living. I was just told that there was someone who was hungry, needed some food, and at the time I had just finished cooking, so I was preparing a hot meal and I sent it and then I sent other canned goods and things, food, bread, water. And then I was told, but he can't cook it. I mean, he held them to canned goods and he has nothing to cook on. So I talked with Ms. Walker about it. She went to the place, I was suggesting meal, I didn't know it was in the condition, because the only thing I can tell you is that I became aware of it at the same time that she did. And I did what I could to help, but it's gonna take the whole community to participate in this.
Absolutely. Yes, Chief.
Can I say something that's true? I think Sergeant Garrett went out with a lady here and we, they did call Adult Protective Services, we spoke with them on a couple occasions, but also, we have to, putting together a program like this is good. Because what we did, we asked him about living in that condition and we come to find out the gentleman who was renting him this place actually gave him a sheet of paper to sign that said he knew he was moving into a place that had these conditions and that in itself is not right. So we need something to make some checks and some balances on things like that. Because he had actually signed for that. And really, the place was terrible.
Absolutely terrible. And things like that typically aren't worth the paper that they're written on, but the poor people who are signing them do not know that. In working with Attorney Kerwin, these are, this one actually, and the next one, discuss, consider and take action to adopt an ordinance regarding rental registration, okay? If this person who was renting, and this comes to us, in other words, right now, we have nothing with any teeth to address as a city, several, because like Ms. Walker, there've been a few places that I've been in that are horrific. It doesn't even matter whether it's an elderly person or student. We shouldn't allow that, we shouldn't have it, and the city should know, number one, who's renting, as other cities do, and number two, have the ability to inspect it. The permit fee can be minimal, that's not the issue. We don't know that that gentleman was there, we don't know how many other people we have, and I've been in a few of these places and some of them have been after they turned over and being invited in there by the new owner to see. I mean, I told one gentleman, I told him, I mean, he came in one day, a month later and he asked me, how you doing Mayor? I said, Doc, I'm not good. And he said, what's wrong? I said, I went in that place that you were renting. And had I known those horrific conditions, we would have done something, not just to the house, we would have seen that there were charges that can be pressed against you. Because there are laws, the problem is, we don't have any. Now, why? Well, we're working to change that and Council, if you would speak to this, what it does, I mean, Attorney, Counselor?
I have a question.
Yes.
In the past, the city has condemned substandard housing, so that means there already has to be some form of policy in place, so what is the current policy in comparison to the new policy? Because we condemn substandard conditions in the past, over the last couple of years, so.
I don't know what provisions you were using. You have a small provision in the International Property Maintenance Code, that is one section, that is all I found. This is a comprehensive substandard structure ordinance that most cities have, if not all cities, to provide you the mechanism to do what you need to do. Like I said, you have a very small provision of Property Maintenance Code that deals with substandard structures. In my opinion, it does not protect the city and allow you to do what you need to do, this ordinance does.
My question is in reference to the public hearing. Someone, we used to use the Board of Adjustments and Appeals, who's the public, who holds the public hearing if someone, so if we issue a citation, now we have a policy, are we using the codes and ordinances and then who do they, they're coming back to municipal judge or is this now where we get into the Board of Adjustments and Appeals?
So to answer your question, you've got two routes you can go. One is a citation route, where you go to municipal court and issue a citation. If it is a substandard structure that needs to be demolished, that is, and there are several that are just clear cut cases in the city that, I don't even think, there's no roof, right? There's maybe no siding at all, it's completely open. Those would be the ones you'd wanna tear down, those you would not go through the municipal court route. You'd go through the route to order it to be demolished, you'd do your publications, you'd do your public hearing, you'd do your orders. I believe the way I have it written is that Council makes that determination as a board to hear those.
And the reason for that is, the city has not had a Board of Appeals for at least six, seven years that I know of. And with the way our situation is written up now, Council is in a position to act as that board. So if someone wants to appeal in action, they would actually come to Council, am I right?
So just for understanding, so go through the municipal court system and then, similar to, I guess, like the water system, if somebody has dispute about the water system and go to the mayor and then they have an issue with the mayor and decide, then they bring it to the Council?
No. So you're, there's basically two routes you can go, okay? So say you've got a structure that has a property maintenance code issued, it's got some siding that's falling down or might have a small, maybe a broken window, okay? It's not such gonna be a true substandard structure at that point, but you might have a property maintenance code, that you cite them under the property maintenance code, okay? It's court. You send your 10 days letter out, they don't fix it, you sign it to court. This is dealing with kind of the worst of the worst, okay? No water, no sewer, the situation these ladies were speaking of, okay? Where it is not a habitable place, that needs to either be demolished or repaired or secured, put a fence around it, or where there's several different scenarios depending on how bad a condition is in. And that would be separate from the municipal court process.
Right, so my, I guess my question is, what is the appeals process? Because people are, I mean-
On the substandard structure? There is no appeal. You can, they can appeal to court, they can appeal to a district court if they don't, if they want to, but that's the appeal process.
My concern is, and I'll definitely be blunt and honest, as a firefighter here in this community, when we go out, when you've been around all the different neighborhoods, we gotta be very careful when we start doing assessments on substandard structures and making this thing, because we have a number of residents who have been neglected and we won't say it, what's on City Park, they've just been neglected in our community for some time. And I think, as well intentioned as this is, I think this is gonna put us on the other side and so I like where we're going, but this, I don't see where it gives us an opportunity because we're not talking about one or two, we could have a whole list and I don't think that, then it's the city's trying to take over this whole thing. And so I think we, I like what we have in the ordinance, the issue is, I don't see what Councilman Randall was talking about, that opportunity to, because we don't have a fund, Waller County doesn't have a fund, there is no safety net for people who can, who we can engage back to what Ms. Walker talked about. And so I think we're talking about some more deeper societal things that many of us serve on boards and participate in Waller County. But I'm trying to figure out, does this substandard policy, it allows us to draw a line in the sand, but does it, what about the other side that we're not addressing right now?
So Council, you make this, if there's a substandard structure, okay, that staff identifies, they will bring it, they do a report, they will bring it to you, we will publicize it, we will notice it. Then Council makes the decision on what to do with that property. You know, you may say, wow, this property has to be, can be repaired, so we're gonna order it to be repaired within a certain time period. Or this property is beyond repair, and I mean, I can think of one off the top of my head, over in Rosewood, that is literally, it's trees growing through the house, I mean, it's not even, there wouldn't even be a place for you to go into the house because there's, it's almost no structure around it, does that make sense? So that would be a structure, and I wish I was trying to pull up a photograph to show you, like so bad, it's not even, it's not even a close call, no one could even live there.
We got some places where-
Does somebody live there?
But, and the other problem is, is if you have places that people are living in that are not habitable, that's a real, and you know about it, that's a real problem for the city.
Point of order, hold on. Item 10 came from primarily, almost exclusively, empty places that are falling apart, like the one in Rosewood, the one I took you to on Pine Street, those kind of things. We're not talking about places where people stay.
That's what she was talking about.
That, I know. This came up just within the last couple of days, we had this on agenda for last, what, for two weeks ago. So number 11 deals more with the ability to, like you said, that gentleman's paying rent and we have no recourse as we sit here. And item 11 discusses, discuss, consider and take action to adopt an ordinance regarding rental registration. So when we're made aware of these things, we have the power of the city to get with a landlord, or in this case, a slumlord, to make them fix it. The substandard structures are primarily, to your concern, empty facilities that are falling apart in the city, that we accept the district court process, the city has nothing in place to really address. So the first one in front of you is to simply take a look and as Counselor Kerwin said, it's gonna come back to the city council. So that's your checking balances, you're gonna have pictures, you're gonna have the stuff that came from ordinance citations, all of those type of things to make those determinations in going forward. So you still have that, but right now, in running the city, I have nothing with which to bring it in front of you. And that's what this will do. It will give us an ordinance so that when it comes to our attention, we can bring it in front of you and you can make decisions. Right now, we can't bring it in front of you. This is simply to get it on the table so it can be addressed. Because in checking, we don't really have a health situation in the county who would normally take care of these, we don't have the facilities and expertise and funding in the city, but at least as we find them and by and large, most of these people are out of area property owners, inheritors, that are just slummy. They just want the money, but they don't wanna put anything back into it. So this would give Council, or actually would give the mayor's office what we need to bring it to Council and then you can dispose of it however you want to. But I felt the need to be able to bring it to you for those same reasons.
Okay, oh, I guess my question, well, I feel like, I see how we're trying to tie these two together, but I think they're two separate issues, but outside of that, with the fact that I know over the last probably 10 years, the city has done things for properties that were substandard structures and we've demolished properties, have, has this, I'll just call it a spade, has the city been demolishing or condemning people's property illegally over the last however many years? I can think of two properties off the top of my head that have been condemned or destroyed or whatever and you're telling me that the city, we didn't have any-
No, what I'm telling you is that under the Property Maintenance Code, there is a section 1.0, there's a section in the International Property Maintenance Code dealing with unsafe structures and equipment, okay? It's 1.08. It does not comply with all the provisions in state law, what you need to comply with, which that ordinance does, on giving all the proper notices, the public hearings, if you go over 30 days, they have to have written plans, I mean, that's all set out in state law. This is a very anemic section, you might have been going under that section, so I don't know.
Let me help Counsel, because I know what are the situations he's speaking about, and this was prior to you. The city had to go through eminent domain on the old gas station for the same stuff we're talking about now, that we could have brought in front of Council. They paid at least $40,000 for it and I don't know how much in attorney's fees, because they went through district court.
That's a different process.
Right, but that's what they used in answer to Counselman Randall's question, they didn't, we didn't have anything that we needed to skip those drastic expenses and to cite that situation that was a hazard, they went through eminent domain to take care of it, which was a very costly and time consuming process. Yes, sir.
So Mr. Mayor, I like the ordinance. My concern is either, how do we change, how do we include in the ordinance? Because once we pass this, we don't get to decipher owner from non-owner, someone owns it in state versus somebody who's currently living in there, don't have the funds to upkeep. So we get into displacement. And I know it's a city responsibility, like the attorney just said, but I think we go down a slippery slope now, but I think it's needed. The question, prior to what we're talking about, we used a different format. Now we've got an ordinance officer, we have, we're doing things in-house, we used before Board of Adjustments and Appeals. We went through that process, the same process you just described about letters going out, having to come back fines, having to appeal, that's how we went through the eminent domain process after we did the Board of Adjustments and Appeal. I'm assuming because of, we have an ordinance officer and all these, and the committee, we've now gotten away from that. And we're using this policy to help us now have a clear guideline, but also expand our reach. Goes back to my question, because we don't get to decipher people who's living in a home, who don't have the money to put siding, you could see through, I don't know if y'all have been out in the community, we got people who you can see, you can see through the floor and so do we then use this, so are we saying we're using this as, to cite buildings that are condemned, like there's one off of it on your street? So that's different, no one's lived there, but then there's about five other, five to 10 other homes that are just, that should be cited, but they got people who live there. This doesn't differentiate between the two.
Well, actually, you can. If it's substandard, all this will do is allow the ordinance committee, et cetera, to bring it in front of the Council and then, some of your very good points, the Council deliberates as to what can we do based on those squalid conditions. We have nothing to bring it in front of the Council. All this is gonna do, your checking balances you, see, it's gonna come to the Council, but right now, we have nothing in which to bring it to you to address that one or even the old ones without going through court. And much of this is for the empty places that are falling apart, that drop down property values, become vacant situations, but when we run into, as you say, someone's living there, then of course, that's gonna have to be addressed differently. In this gentleman's case, the city with something like this, can put the power of the city on the landlord, because he's living in squalid conditions. You know, there are a lot, a lot of things that the city can do, the city can go in, pay somebody, clean it up and put a lien on the property, if that be Council's decision. But right now, we have nothing to fix up anything and all this is doing is taking what little we have, as city attorney said, and giving us some teeth to comment. Like, they share this with you, right now, with everything you know, you can't do a thing. We can't do a thing as a city and I think that's horrific.
And if I could say two points, one, the word condemn is used in different contexts. So you have your condemnation power and that might have been how you, it sounds like when the mayor was talking, you'd use your condemnation power to condemn that gas station. Now, we're talking about condemning a house, this is kind of a different terminology, you don't wanna use the word condemn the house, it's kind of what you're doing, but you're declaring it a substandard, okay? So just to make sure, maybe that's where we're kind of talking about two different things. I also tell you, I'm going through the same process right now in another city, gentleman lives in a property, there is no water, he has holes in the floor, there is an unsafe condition with the electrical system and so he, Council is working with him, he's also gotten Habitat for Humanity to come in and maybe help him and Catholic Charities was going to help relocate him for a while. But he cannot stay in that situation. It is dangerous, the city knows it's dangerous, the city knows he has no water. So under those circumstances, you know, the city had to take action and that city, we're going through that process right now and the city is bending over backwards to help him as much as they can, you know? And it does come to a point that, you know, if someone's living there, it is a difficult situation, but you have to treat, you know, them like everybody else.
And how is it?
Yes. Counsel?
Counsel?
Okay.
And what's Counsel's pleasure?
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Counsel Wallace?
I move that we accept, uh, the adoption of the ordinance regarding substandard structures.
Second.
It's been properly moved that the Counsel adopt the ordinance regarding substandals, substandard structures. You heard the motion, ready for the questions?
Oh, ready.
Okay, Counselman Randall?
Uh, Attorney Kerwin?
Yes.
Uh, just for clarification, cause I wanna be sure I'm abundantly clear. Can you tell me what the process is from start to finish for someone for, uh, a substandard living, for a substandard building?
So typically, you will have, um, identify the property, you can either get on the property, because they'll let you on the property, or we'll go to the municipal court and get a search warrant executed under chapter eighteen, which I often have to do, to go onto the property, cause the property may be vacant. Um, if no one's living there, you might, you won't have permission to go on the property, so you can get a warrant to go onto the property. You go, you inspect it, you have an inspector, probably from Bureau Ver- we, we use Chris Haber, um, who was here earlier, he is our building official in the other city, he went and inspected that property. He does a full report, takes photographs, talks about the electrical, the plumbing, what's going on with this house, can it be repaired? His recommendation, or is it something that needs to be torn down, or is it something that you just need to put a fence around, um, keep people out of it, that might be the best you can do. At that point, you take the report, if it's substandard, and they say, I think this needs to be remediated, repaired, demolished, whatever, then we, uh, post notice of that as a public hearing, we put it in the newspaper, it comes before this body. Anyone can present evidence, we give notice to everybody, mortgagees, lien holders, um, owners. Anybody who has any interest in the property gets notice to come before you and present whatever testimony they want about the building. We present the report from the building official, um, the owner showed up, it's the one that I just did, and he said, you know, I, I'm trying to repair it, here's what I'm trying to do, um, if you allow over thirty days, they have to present a detailed plan. If you go over ninety days, or some other certain things that they have to provide as well, to show that they can fix it. Uh, the process is not a quick process, it takes, you know, you can order something in thirty days, say something that's just, and I'm gonna use the terminology the Supreme Court uses, it's kind of like pornography, you know it when you see it. On a substandard structure, that is substandard, you know it when you see it, and, and it's not...
Now, now, Counsel, you skipped, um, the process that we're more familiar with on a local level. Our ordinance folks have been sending the ten-day notices to the last known address, and then looking to have them come in court in front of our municipal court judge, you know, pay the fine, tell her what they're gonna do to eradicate the situation based on the, uh, the conditions and that sort of thing, and of course, based on the laws, and then the higher process that, that you spoke of. But don't we still start with our municipal court process and citations on this type of thing?
If it's something that is...
Ordnance, ordinance violations, or it's a...
You could, but on substandard structures, it's, you're not gonna get compliance typically through...